I'm gonna blur this, so no one's trying to read the whiteboard behind me.
It's four o'clock if we want to go ahead and get started with our study session.
Okay, thank you Chair Burton, and let's see which Commissioners we have with us right now. Welcome Commissioner Hayward and Commissioners Best and Ruggles. We'll see who else joins us as we get going here. Good afternoon, everyone. If any members of the public join us, I'm Jess McNeely with Community Development Department Staff. Welcome to your study session for today, February 26th. First two items on your study session are overview of cases that we anticipate being on your public hearing next month, March 26th. So they are both, well, the first one is a conditional use permit request for a metal storage container, a very routine request, and the second one is a design review for a project, a commercial project in Oak Creek Canyon where the Oak Creek Canyon area plan has design standards. Bob Short from our staff is managing both of those cases. So Bob, if you're ready, if you could give the Commissioners an overview of those two items, items one and two on the study session agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Good afternoon Commissioners, welcome to the new Commissioners. This case is a metal storage container case, pretty simple case, so we'll go quickly here. Basically, this is out in Howard Mesa Ranches on a really large property in the G-zone, so it's 36-acre property, so it shouldn't have very much impact. It is an eight-by-40 metal storage container, and just a reminder to Commissioners, eight-by-20 storage containers are permitted by right. If you only have one of them, once you get to eight-by-40 or more than one, eight-by-20, then that requires a conditional use permit. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property, again in Howard Mesa Ranches. This is Highway 64, went up to Valley, this is the edge of Valley right here, this is the railroad coming through, Grand Canyon Railroad. This is Howard Mesa Ranches. This is a narrow photo showing the subject property, very large property on a nice road. Howard Mesa Ranches tends to have really well-maintained roads. And this is the site plan, the applicant has called this out as a conics box right there, and it's 340 feet from Lariat Road right there, so it's pretty far out. And this is basically a picture of the storage container that he has ordered, and this is the color that he would paint it, this light green color right here. And with that, I'll take any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, thank you Commissioners. Yes, second, I'll bring the second one up. Okay, this case is Donhold's Cabins DRO 25001. And in this case, this is a new, I believe a new owner, I'm not sure how long they've owned the property, they're called Dust Development, and they're looking to replace the cabins on the site that have gotten older. It's 16.77 acres, about halfway down to Sedona, I think everyone's pretty much familiar with that. So this is a design review case, we call it a DRO application, that DRO stands for Design Review Overlay, and it's for new lodging cabins at the Donhold's cabins. This is the vicinity map again, showing this is Oak Creek coming through, this is the location of Donhold's cabins. Sedona's to the south, Flagstaff is to the north, this is Lunt's Park. This is narrow photos showing the subject property, the RC zone down there actually has this parcel as well, but there's no development on it or allowed to be on it, so it's all over in here across the highway. It was called Butterfly Garden Inn for a while. The new owner has changed the name back to Donhold's cabins, and I think they may even change it to something else as they move along. So I wanted to give some orientation to new Commissioners and maybe reminders to old Commissioners as well about what a design review overlay is. There are several design review overlays in the county, and those are basically the same plan area as some of the area plans. They include Kachina Village, Belmont, Oak Creek, and of course, many others that you're familiar with, some of you are. So those areas, those planned areas have a design review, they have designed to be over them, so the area plan provides special design guidelines for industrial, commercial, and multifamily developments only. And each design, each area plan has its own design guidelines, but they are very similar, as you probably know. I wanted to remind the Commission that in this case you only determine if the design of the cabins are consistent with the Oak Creek Area Plan Design Guidelines, there are no findings besides that. So there's some background on this property, the first cabin I believe is built in 1920. More cabins were built in the 30s and the 40s, and they're getting to the point where they need to be replaced, they're made out of wood and logs, and I think there's some rot going on, there's also fire danger with this kind of thing. A zone change to resort commercial and design review was approved in 2012 for this area, and that's when they got the resort commercial zoning before that, it was basically legal non-conforming general zoning. A total of 29 cabins were approved at that time, now that's more than they had on-site at that time, or they have on-site now, I believe. So that does include the development of additional cabins. This is the master plan showing the existing improvements on the site, so you can see all these cabins through here. Also the store and the old restaurant that's had some damage from an explosion, actually. And the first phase, what they want to do to begin with is just replace, replace or install new cabins, these five right here, the darker ones, you can see. But eventually, they want to replace all of them, so they would replace all the cabins there with this new design. And this is the design, these are the elevations of the one-bedroom units. They have a siding that looks like wood, although it's not wood, which in this case is probably a good thing because it's less receptive to fire. They have decks on the top floor, and they have a deck down here as well, and they have lots of glass, so people can view the natural setting in Oak Creek. This is the two-bedroom unit, basically the same thing, just a little bit larger. And this is the materials, this is the siding. This is the railing, and this will be the decking on the decks, and this is a picture of what one of them would look like. As you can tell, they have lots of windows, so they can be kind of in touch with nature from the inside. And with that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Bob, could you let us know when you're going down, in case we could fit it into our busy schedules? And also, what do we have in the way of fire protection design that they have to comply with? Is there much in there in the area plan?
Commissioner Best, there may be some things in the area plan, the area plan goes back to 1988, so it's pretty old, but it appears that Sedona Fire Department has some pretty significant requirements. They may require, it seems like they may require that all the cabins be sprinkled, but also some fire retardant design, so this would definitely be an improvement to the wooden log and log cabins that are there now.
So Commissioner Best, this is Jess with staff, and for your indication and all the Commissioners, the Sedona's Oak Creek Fire District is the only fire district in our county that has their own separate adopted fire code. So any building permit that goes through our department, we issue the building permit, and they also do plan review for all permits, and I believe, as Bob mentioned, their fire code does include sprinkler requirement. And of course, a part of that, a part of their adopted fire code for their fire district does include what we would all consider a WUI, Wildland Urban Interface.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Best, or actually, would any other Commissioners like to go as well, so I can plan for vehicles or just Commissioner Best? Commissioner Best?
I'd like to go as well.
Oh, you would? Okay.
Thank you.
When are you going?
It would be next week, at some point next week, actually, generally I go on Thursday or Friday.
Okay. I have raised my hand here, I hope I can be heard.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yes, I would like to go along as well, because I spent a considerable amount of time there in 2012 with the referenced CUP, so I think that, boy, we're probably looking at quite an improvement, because it was very obvious that building, all aspects of the buildings of the cabins were definitely right out of the 20s through 40s. So I'm kind of anxious to see what it looks like now, prior to the initiation of this upcoming process, which I hope goes through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wood, is Friday generally the best day for most Commissioners who want to go or?
Thursday. Whatever works for you is what works for me.
Friday is a good day for me.
Yeah, Friday is definitely preferable for me as well, Bob.
All right, afternoon or morning, doesn't matter?
Yeah. On March 7th, that Friday, doesn't seem to make much difference in my schedule, as long as we're back by five, which I'm sure we're going to be.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
Time-wise, that's fine for me, just if you wouldn't mind sending an email to remind me, I sure appreciate that.
I will.
Yeah, Bob, if you could do that as a calendar invite, Bob, and put me on it as well, and we'll get a vehicle.
Okay. Mr. October, are you interested? No? Okay.
No, no, I'm sorry, I can't travel next week, I have a lot of appointments, all right, thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and schedule for Friday afternoon.
Okay, if there's no other questions on this one, then let's go ahead and move to the Community Development Department update.
Thank you Chair Burton, are you seeing my screen again?
Yes.
All right. Well, on the department update, for all the long-range projects, you are stuck with me as second string, Melissa Shaw is not with us this evening, she had to go back to the East Coast, so she is on a different time zone. But first item here, item number one, I wanted to remind you that the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, 60-day public review closed back in December. That public review generated a lot of comments, around 2,400. So staff is in the process of organizing those comments, analyzing, and working towards what will be some response to those comments. And we fully anticipate there will be some additional public outreach in responding to those comments. Now, as you know, as you've known for several months now, we've been working towards a May 2nd joint retreat between city elected, so city council, and county elected county board supervisors, and both the city and county planning and zoning Commissioners, all together on one retreat on May 2nd, still exact timeline for that to be determined, but we know that that May 2nd retreat, joint retreat, will be facilitated by the consultant on the project. Now, in preparation for the May 2nd retreat, we have scheduled an April 22nd Board of Supervisors work session. That is just to get them familiar, more familiar and comfortable with the draft Flagstaff Regional Plan. In meeting with several of the supervisors, we had a brilliant idea to invite the planning and zoning Commissioners to that same work session. So you all are now invited and invited to participate. This will be a joint work session between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors at 1:15, did we get the date on here? We need to work on this planning staff, these guys do not get to the details.
You had a date of April 22nd somewhere.
April 22nd, and the time is 1:15. So that will, that will give you all an opportunity to meet in person and have a dialogue, have an interaction with staff and the Board of Supervisors on the Flagstaff Regional Plan update. And I have even better news, late breaking, that we got funding approval to do a lunch with you all, with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners and the Board of Supervisors on April 22nd, immediately prior to that work session. So if you pencil in on your calendars, on April 22nd from 12 to 1, we will be holding a lunch out in the lobby of the admin building downtown, right outside of the board chambers. There's a big table out there, if you remember, in olden times, we would set pizzas out there when you had late hearings. So we will get some foods, we will try to get a good mixture to include some vegetarian and gluten-free options. So this is, this is the pay raise we got for you as planning and zoning Commissioners to get a lunch for you. So several board members asked for this as well. They thought it would be a great opportunity to meet with you in person, we have several new Commissioners, we will have three brand-new Commissioners who will be appointed and already have their orientations in time to attend this April 22nd lunch and work session. Should be a good time, and plenty of time for you all to mingle with each other and the board members from 12 to 1, and then at 1:15, we get down to business on reviewing the regional plan. Any questions on the April 22nd?
Jess, can you send out an invite for both the lunch, like two separate invites, one for the lunch and then one for the actual work session?
Absolutely, and thank you for prompting me there, Chair Burton. The work session will be available hybrid, so if any of the Commissioners can't make it in person, you could certainly attend and participate in the work session by joining the board's meeting that day online. So we will, yeah, we will send that invite.
Jess, how long do you expect it to last?
We are scheduled for just one hour, but the board work sessions are flexible, I mean, there is an agenda. If they are on something and the board chair wants to continue working on something, the follow-on items that would be waiting on us are just other work sessions with other departments. I'm glad we're getting the one right after lunch, so that way we have a time certain, we won't be waiting, you know, Parks and Rec or one of those other departments.
Jess, do you have a time and a location for the meeting on the 2nd of May?
Very good question, Commissioner Best. My assumption at this point in time is that it will be a half-day and it will be in City Hall, but that is not yet determined. So as soon as we do have that time in place, we will be sending you an invite for that one as well. And obviously, we need to get quorums posted for both April 22nd and May 2nd, in case we have a quorum. I hope we do, I hope we get as much participation as possible with the planning and zoning Commissioners.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the May 2nd retreat?
I don't see any.
I wish we had some more of our Commissioners here, so I can get a comfort level on them understanding this plan as well. Okay, Madam Chair, next item, item two, Invision 2045 is the project name for our update to the county's comprehensive plan. As you all know, we have an advisory group, actually, a couple of the Commissioners are on the advisory group, and that advisory group has been meeting monthly, they last met last week on February 20th, and they have reviewed all of these chapters so far. Last one they reviewed was community services, public safety, and partnerships. The next chapter to be reviewed, going into next month, will be economic development, we're calling it resilient economies and housing. And that'll be the last chapter with chapter content for the advisory group's review, and then we will be scheduling their review of an introduction chapter and the appendices to include an implementation action plan, very important. Any questions on the update process for the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, Jess, since we've got time and you're carrying the ball, in the glossary of the regional plan, the proposed glossary, there is what I've been looking for for a long time, and that is housing definitions that are broken down and pretty well-defined. Affordable housing, workforce housing, and attainable housing. And I won't go any farther with that. But in the county, for many years, we've been talking about workforce housing and affordable housing without really defining it very well. And so I hope that you'll pass on to Melissa my enthusiasm for that glossary listing of housing in the proposed regional plan, and not to say that we want to copy it exactly, but I think defining it so that when we get cases, we know what we're talking about would really help.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we've had discussions about that, Commissioner Best, and that is certainly the direction we're heading in. Being that the Flagstaff Regional Plan is an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan, from the county's perspective, having the exact same definitions would be my preference, if there's some reason we can't, but trying to have a quantifiable definition is certainly in all of our best interests in being able to understand and make good decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, any other questions, anything on the long-range planning efforts?
I'm not seeing anything, I think we can move on.
All right. Quick update on Board of Supervisors actions. ZC Zone Change 2405, that was the G General Zone to CG Commercial General in Valley for an old legal non-conforming grandfathered motel project that you heard, I think, a month before last, or even prior to that. That was heard by the board on February 11th, and they continued it to March 18th, so we will be taking that back to the board on March 18th. Any questions on that case?
Do we know why it was continued? I'm just curious where that conversation is going.
Yeah, good question. So there was some opposition that kind of popped up really late in the game, different than what you heard at your hearing, and the question was wanting to clarify, why is this piece of property, which is undersized for the G-zone, it is not 10 acres, I believe it's around seven acres, why, why and how is it Zone G? Wanting some clarification from public comment and then from the board on why this property is Zone G. We have a general broad understanding, but we'll get down to brass tacks for the board as to how that happened. As we all know, we have a lot of properties that were developed often pre-81, and a lot of times, pre-74 would have been another magic year, that if they were developed prior to 74, which this property was, then commercial zoning, as we know it today, didn't exist. So back in those days, prior to 74, just about everything in the county was Zone G, and a conditional use permit was used for everything. And if you look at the 1960, I forget what the year is, but it's the pre-74 zoning ordinance, it actually lists the available conditional use permits in the G-zone, which was at the time called the A-zone, and among the available conditional use permits in the A-zone at that time was hotel motel, so makes sense. But as properties developed over time, if they already were entitled, so to speak, as this one was thought to have been, then the county just moved on and never bothered with updating the zoning. Obviously, it would have been in the property owner's interest, and now is in their interest as they want to redevelop and improve their property by getting a zone change, so they're no longer legal non-conforming, but rather conforming with their zoning for a commercial use. Does that answer your question, Chair Burton?
Yes, it does. I was just curious what prompted the continuation.
That was it, just to make sure we had full clarity on the legal non-conform, how the G-zone came about and the legal non-conforming status.
Jesse, I heard that there was something to do with the Valley Area Plan as well, is that accurate? Or based on what you said, it sounds like that's not accurate.
That was part of the discussion, so there was a discussion from community members indicating that the area plan in Valley is quite old, I believe it's 99, and wanting an update to the area plan prior to making decisions on zoning, that was not part of the charge to staff with the continuance. Just for our discussion, as staff is currently updating the comprehensive plan, once we are done with, once we are complete with the comprehensive plan update and have an updated comprehensive plan adopted, staff will now shift our efforts back to updating area plans. And I fully anticipate that the Valley Area Plan will be high on the priority list, maybe top of the priority list, as the next area plan to be updated. However, with some of the community members' comments, it was noted by board members in the hearing, and staff, is there support the concept that you can't hold, you can't hold up a zone change request from a property owner for waiting for an area plan to be updated, which we full well know could be a year or more down the road. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hayward?
Even the unsaid part of it, Jess, so I appreciate that.
Yes. Any other questions, Chair Burton, on the Board of Supervisors update?
I see there's one more item on there for an appointment.
Oh, sorry, yeah, FYI, Larry Leslie, who I doubt many of you have met, but maybe you have, he lives in the city of Williams, he was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission yesterday. So he is now appointed, I have an orientation scheduled with him, I believe, next week or the following week, in plenty of time for the March hearing, the March Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. So you all can plan on meeting him at your next hearing, your next study session and hearing, and this is some great timing to hopefully meet him in person on April 22nd. Any question about Larry Leslie's appointment to District 3?
Does that put us at a full 10 now?
It's a world record, yes. Yeah, that does, that does put us at a 10, which is great, which is, you know, it's good for, I believe, you know, it's good for the community. It makes us all less stressed about having a quorum, gives you all flexibility that you could get sick if you had to or something and miss a hearing, not worry about being the Commissioner that was responsible for not being able to have a quorum. So yes, that will put us at 10 Commissioners, each district, each of the five districts now has two appointed.
Just remember that you gotta have a lot of food for lunch, Jess.
I knew Commissioner Best would be our most excited Commissioner about that lunch. I almost emailed you first.
Can I bring my therapy dog? Can I bring my therapy dog?
Sure. I, I, I don't know that we'll necessarily have dog food, but we'll see, we'll see what we can do. Okay, Madam Chair, that gets us up to round table. And if memory serves me right, we had discussed the items not on the agenda for the public and the the ordering of your public hearing agendas in potentially offering for the public to speak prior to your public hearing on cases during your public hearings.
Right. And that is reflected in our, in tonight's agenda.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to discuss any further on that. So.
Yeah, if everybody, if we're all, we're all prepared for that, then, then we can, we can move on on that one.
So does anybody have anything else they want to discuss for round table?
Yeah, I've got two things. One is, what do you think the date is on getting through the comprehensive plan to the point where it's, it's more or less in a form that we should be reviewing it? And when do we start formally reviewing it?
Very good question, Commissioner Best. And I wish, I wish I had put this into a slide to put up for your, for your view.
If you wanna, if you wanna just answer it by sending out an email, that's fine.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we have a, we have a great little sheet that Melissa put together here that shows parallel both the comprehensive plan update and the regional plan update by month. So we do anticipate, again, this is optimistic, anticipate having the comprehensive plan draft complete in April. That would put us, that would put us into May and June for a 60 day public review. Having it posted to the website, doing some press release and, and probably doing some workshops or open houses around the county. We're going to try to get one in each district during that 60 day public review. Into June, we anticipate doing revisions based on, based on those open houses and based on the comments we receive through public, through the public review. And we anticipate the earliest we would be bringing it to public hearing, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation would be in July. So our goal is, is optimistically to have it done by the end of the summer or early fall.
Okay, thank you. And another thing I thought I would do is just quickly update the casino issue. And the effort of the interest of some commissioners to have a neighborly discussion, not an official discussion with the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise. I wrote an email and sent it to Supervisor Vigang, copied Supervisor Vasquez. Basically saying that we are, we are neighbors. We respect each other's jurisdiction. But there's no reason that neighbors shouldn't sit down and have a chat about shared values. I mentioned the lighting, dark skies lighting and traffic. I, and I mentioned that Commissioners Wilson and Ruggles and I would be available to help in an informal manner. And I did not get a response, but I did hear that she did get it and read it. And I've gotten some information from Commissioner Ruggles. He sent me a letter that Tom Paxton of Timberline Fernwood Block Watch had sent out to his neighbors. And he had contacted Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise basically with the same theme. Wanting to have neighbors sit down together. Neighbors being the trust property and the community of Timberline Fernwood. Also heard from Jess at some point, and I couldn't find the email, that Jay Kristelman, Community Development Director, had also sent out an email early in the game. I think also offering basically the same thing to the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise. So I think it's out there effectively and we will just have to see where it goes from there. I think, I think we've, we've reached out as best we can. And hopefully we will. And, and Tom Paxton of Timberline Fernwood got a, had a nice response. Just basically it was, we're not quite there yet to be ready for that kind of discussion. But when we are, we'll reach out to you. So I think the community has, has reached out numerous ways and we'll just hope that everything works out great. That's all I got on that one. Thanks.
It looks like, well, I wasn't watching, so I don't know who put their hand up first. Let's just go with Commissioner Hayward.
No, see, I think it, does it show one and two on yours? That means John, John went first.
Okay, mine, I'm, I'm getting.
I see one and two.
Do you? Because mine is giving a, an icon that's a broken photo. So it's not actually giving me the one and two icon.
John was first, so.
Okay, then let's go, let's go with John then.
Okay. Well, thank you. Just a, a couple of clarifications. I did send Sot some information from John Paxton, who is in the process of setting up a, essentially a community information session on the casino. One thing, John Paxton works for the Sheriff's Office. And the reason he is doing that is a direct result of what I had to say at both the Timberline Fernwood Neighborhood Watch meetings and also the Doni Park Neighborhood Watch meetings in early December. A lot of it was completely out of the blue news for former Sheriff Driscoll and a number of other people. The one thing about it is that whatever I had to say was confirmed completely by a letter from the Department of the Interior that gave the, the legal rationale for the decision they made. It was very clearly laid out. And that I'm sure will be part of what John manages to get together for everyone. But the communication from the Department of the Interior on this was several pages long, was very clear, very well organized. And confirmed the legal basis for the decision they made. There were some, some aspects of it that made it difficult to find out what was going on. But this all came along with the confirmation of the compact made with the state of Arizona and the Navajo Nation in 2021. And that was signed off in May of that year. So I am somewhat remiss in not catching that during some of our discussions during the Doni Park area plan. Because I may get a point to research all of these things as thoroughly as possible. But nevertheless, none of that would have affected what the Department of the Interior, state of Arizona and the Navajo Nation were doing at that time. So that's all I've got to say on it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Chair. Sat shared with me the, the letter that he'd, he'd sent a week or so ago. So I've had, you know, some time to, to think about this and my thoughts on the matter. I, for me, having more than one commissioner reach out to, you know, a landowner in regards to their project does make me feel uncomfortable in terms of its, you know, potential perception as a, you know, an official, official commission action. You know, I can imagine someone else's point of view that it looks like the commission trying to insert itself right into a process whereby we, we don't have any jurisdiction. That said, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to have, you know, some of the people who have the, you know, highest level of, you know, experience in this area and understanding of the, you know, the issues that under consideration, you know, be involved in that process. So, you know, my hope would be that we could do it in a way that, you know, is more official. Because, you know, like Sat said, we might be neighbors, but we are also, you know, planning and zoning commissioners, right? Appointed by our elected representatives with, with powers, you know, given to us by the state. So, you know, I, I believe we have the ability, Jess, you can confirm this for me, to, to set up subcommittees as part of the commission. Maybe that's a method by which, you know, we do something a little bit more official. And say, you know, to, to the developer, to the Navajo Gaming Enterprise, you know, if you, if you to talk to us, you know, voluntarily, because you don't have any obligation to. You know, we're, we're happy to do it. But, you know, like I said, I, I, I I know it's not a quorum, but it, if there's three commissioners, you know, at that meeting, and you know, especially if they're talking with a unified voice, it, it's, it gets a little too close, close to an official action for my confidence.
Well, Commissioner Hayward, you're correct. I'm sorry, you're correct in that, in that the Planning and Zoning Commission can create separate subcommittees. And part of, I will, just to, just to back that up, and I apologize, Commissioner Ruggles, I didn't mean to step on you there. But I will point out that staff, essentially staff is offered. Because there's certainly regulations on the books that, that Navajo Gaming Enterprise is not subject to. But the regulations of our zoning ordinance include our dark sky ordinance, which, which we all, we all acknowledge could, could be helpful, not obligatory, but helpful for that project. Likewise, staff is here to hand off and have any discussions with the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood area plan in that there are goals, objectives in that area plan and even design guidelines. The staff would be happy to pass on to NGE and to, and to have a discussion with. So, so staff's, staff has already, had already put that out early as well. So there, there's a couple of avenues here. And a couple of opportunities in ways to help, help a property owner who has no obligation, but help them understand and work with the documents that help guide the county's development. And with that, I apologize. So go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I want to make one thing perfectly clear here. When I spoke at the Timberline Fernwood Neighborhood Watch Meeting and also at Doni Park, I made it absolutely clear to everyone in attendance that I was speaking as a private citizen. When we met for the meeting at Timberline Firearms, that was December. There was no mention whatsoever, planning and zoning. It was apparent to everyone there that this was beyond whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission could be involved in. I, I can't be more clearer and to the point on that. Jess McNeely was at the, the Doni Park meeting in December, the Neighborhood Watch meeting. And also made that perfectly clear that this was not a planning and zoning issue. He has added a little bit to that. Now, I chose to speak on this because I did the research, I connected the dots. I came to the same conclusion that the Department of the Interior came to in drawing up the compact with the Navajo Nation, that it was legally mandated under the 1974 legislation that was supposed to settle the Navajo Hopi land dispute. As far as anything that alluded to me as being on a planning and zoning commission, that was something that was nothing of my making when it appeared on the agenda for the December 5th Doni Park Neighborhood Watch. I did not even see the agenda until very shortly before that meeting, because I'm not on their mailing list. Although I was on the agenda as if someone who was going to speak at that meeting. So I just hope you understand what I'm trying to tell you, that I did not turn this into an issue that is involving the Planning and Zoning Commission or the county. Period. Thank you.
Wish her best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was pretty explicit in the letter and unfortunately I can't seem to put my hands on it at this moment. But our offer was from three commissioners who explicitly are respecting the separate jurisdiction of Coconino County and the trust land. And I think I said something in the order of, we are offering our services privately as people who are used to coming up with win-win solutions. But we are not doing this as commissioners. And I personally don't think it's appropriate to have a subcommittee of the commission do this. Maybe the attorney would like to get involved here. I think we've got enough community voices out there that if the Navajo Gaming Enterprise wishes to have a community conversation, there are lots of people who have offered their services. And it's just a question of whether or not they, whether or not they do. I, I have no idea how, how Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise is set up. Whether it's a local group, whether it's an architect in New Jersey, I just don't know. And it's really, again, we're like the United States and Mexico. We have contact if we want it and we make agreements if we care to, but we don't have to. We have a border between us. And so I personally would like to leave it informal unless they reach out to the county and say, hey, yeah, we would like some help with. I particularly mentioned John Ruggles as a dark skies expert, because he is. And I think that would be very helpful. And that to me, since, since the actual physical property is within the sight of the top of the peaks. If you go out there, you can see the top of, not sure if it's Aggie's or Humphrey's or both. So that puts it within a, an aesthetic and also a spiritual environment that I think that it would just make common sense to respect with the kind of lighting that our dark skies ordinance supports. And the other thing that I mentioned was traffic, because obviously keeping traffic under control is good for the casino and is also very important for the people who live, live north of the casino, which is a lot of people who have to get to work and get home every day. So I definitely think we should check out the legality of us putting together any kind of a committee before we do that. Thank you.
Before we go on to Commissioner Ruggles, our, our counsel has raised her hand, so she wants to chime in. Ms. Lane?
Yeah, well, I just, I wanted to respond since I was kind of asked. I, I think, I mean, as, as Jess already mentioned, like you do have the power to do subcommittees. However, the planning commission is like a body. However, the Planning Commission is like a body of the county. So I think before that action would be taking place, we would need direction from county management on whether that's a policy decision of the county. So that's, that's just what I would want to chime in on there. Like we, the Planning Commission can't take a contrary position to the county as a whole because we're all one. So that, that's the only thing I would caution on the, the subcommittee front.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, I want to thank our representative of the county attorney's office for her comments, as well as Commissioner Best. The one thing that I agree completely with Commissioner Best on, along with everything else, of course, is my opinion that it is completely inappropriate to come up with a subcommittee from the Planning and Zoning Commission to be involved in this. I know what the politics of that are. That is one of the reasons why I say that. And two, you know, we have no jurisdiction and to inject county to the subcommittee without clearing it with county management and the board of supervisors, I think is completely inappropriate. Thank you.
And it looks like our newest commissioner has, wants to chime in. Commissioner Burger?
Welcome, Commissioner Tina Berger.
Hi all, thanks. I didn't get on the call a little bit earlier. I have a little bit of, or should I say a lot of experience working with sovereign nations. Did a lot of development down in Scottsdale and worked with the Salt River Pima Tribe. Ian is kind of the head guy. We came into a situation where we needed to work with them not only for the 101, but development and casinos, and we took a very approachable approach to them. They don't function the same. They don't have committee meetings. They don't, they just have some sort of family meeting and they go along those kinds of lines. So kind of edging on the side of saying, we stay with more of a personal approach with them. They do not function anywhere near a city or county mentality. But that's just, that's just my comments working with sovereign nations in the past. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hayward?
Sorry, I raised my hand there at the last minute. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, at the, the root of my concern, right, is that I, I don't want to be put in a position where you know, it, it, because of their actions, right, of any number of commissioners, right, but more than one, right? I mean, I think to John's point, when you're in a meeting and you're, and you're, you're, you're just there and you're there by yourself and you, you know, it's perfectly reasonable to say, you know, look, I'm here as a private citizen. You know, when we get to the point of three commissioners, we get to the point of, you know, look, we're discussing this in a, in, in an official county meeting, that, that, that gets it to the level where the rest of us, you know, potentially get painted with the same brush, right, as the three people or four people, or, you know, whatever's less than a quorum is, you know, is having these conversations. So, you know, I think, you know, consequently, right, John, I mean, the, the notion that it would be, i- i- if it's completely inappropriate for the commission as a whole to have what would be, right, an informal conversation, you know, to Tina's point, then, you know, how close to completely inappropriate is it for three commissioners to do the same thing? That, that, that's my, that's my concern, that, that, that's what makes me uncomfortable. So I think, you know, my request of the group is that we either do it officially or we don't do it at all. And officially doesn't have to mean officially in, in, you know, i- in terms of the way we expect that we have any oversight, right? But it does mean that it's, it's, you know, run through the group, it's run through staff, it's run as, as Angela said, you know, to ensure that we're consistent with the goals of the county as a whole. You know, so that, that, that's, that's where I am. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily know that we need to to, to decide anything right now, but I wanted to make my, my, my feelings heard on that matter.
Okay. I'll, I'll get to you guys in just a second. I, if you're acting as a private citizen, it's probably not the most appropriate for us to be discussing it here. So, and I think that's what Commissioner Hayward was kind of getting at. So, am I, am I, I mean, Jess, are you kind of thinking along the same lines here? What are your thoughts?
Thanks, Chair Burton. I think the discussion we're having right now is, is great discussion. I, I would, my perspective is that, is that the commissioners and, and many community members want to be good neighbors and want to help. That's great. We can, we can go further down this road if necessary. This is all a big if. I, I don't know what the response will be. I, I do feel that, you know, staff is, is used to, is part of our professional responsibility to coordinate with our partners. And there's many partners, jurisdictional partners within our county. We regularly, we regularly work with National Park Service, with National Forest, with our incorporated cities, City of Page, City of Fredonia, City of Williams. So, and we support them often. We, we get asked for advice from many of our jurisdictional partners. So I think we would see this the same. So I, I think that's probably one of the better opportunities for staff to work with, with other staffs of jurisdictional partners. And going beyond this discussion, if, if the, the need comes up to discuss again, we certainly can. And we can get some more feedback from county management, even run this by, further by attorney's office, and, and thanks Angela for, for chiming in here. But I, I, I kind of anticipate that there may not be a need for, for the commission as commissioners to, to weigh in on this project. Great intent, fully, fully understand the intent, intent's great. But staff certainly has access to all the regulations, the plans, the documents that could help our, could be of assistance to our neighboring jurisdictional partners, and staff will make sure that we follow through on that. And, and this discussion helps, you know, helps staff to, to think about, think about it and see the importance. Does that help, Chair Burton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Tovey?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to just make a little bit of a clarifying, give you a little bit of a clarifying information regarding Navajo Nation. I think dealing with smaller indigenous nations is, is probably better. But I know that Navajo Nation is a lot larger than a lot of our nations in the state. And so once decisions are made at the chapter level, which is more family oriented, then, once those are done, it's basically in the hands of Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprises at this point. So I'm not really sure how many chapters were needed to, to approve this, or who is, or how many of them have been, are, are asked to be involved. And so I think that, I think dealing with our, at least my relatives, I think is, is a little bit bigger than the small, the smaller tribes where we can say that they are family level. And I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, thank you. I'd certainly like to come in on the side of Commissioner Berger's comments. This is something I'm very familiar with. The other thing is that if other members of the commission are not familiar with how John Paxton and the sheriff's office have done the Neighborhood Watch Meetings, which I have participated in since well before I got on this commission, they are very informal. Nothing is off the table in terms of discussion. I have never been to one where the discussion has not been courteous and civil. And as I said, informal, it's more like a family gathering, really. I have to appreciate Commissioner Berger's and Rose Tohe's comments relative to this. And what he is working on getting set up for this is just that, it is very informal. As a matter of fact, the Donnie Park area plan that I was, or not the area plan, but, but the Neighborhood Watch Meeting, of course, I, I would urge everyone here to attend one, just to find out how that, how they work. Again, very informal, it's like a family gathering, literally, because it's the same people who are there all the time. And my, my impression from the get-go has been that people do really well with listening and hearing what everyone else has to say. I'd also like to comment on Mr. McNeely's comments. I agree with him completely, which I'm sure is a first. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anything else that we want to discuss at roundtable? Okay, not seeing any, so I think we should take advantage.
Oh, yes. Chair Burton, I forgot to just add this, and I was doing it in chat, but I figured I'd go ahead and just say it. I think with what counsel expressed, I think that we, we do need at least some direction from the Board of Supervisors and county manager. I think that would be needed and would be welcomed, I think, with our, at least for me, it would be. Thank you.
Mr. McNeely, can you just to make a note of, of that request?
Yeah, we'll pass it on to county management.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
Thank you. Yeah, this is kind of last minute, but tomorrow at 2:15, I am meeting Eric Wolverton, Head of Habitat for Humanity, out at the site of the Starter Homes in Timber Sky. If anybody else is interested, just to have a a briefing out there. I don't know how much is out there right now. I think it's pretty, they've started much, but if anybody else is curious about what's going on out there, just contact me and I'll give the information or, or contact Jess, maybe. Jess, you probably want to know how many people are going out. Just to double check that there isn't a forum, but there not going to be. But anyway.
Yeah, if you're planning on going, please, please let, please contact me and so that way we can post, post.
And Jess, you can, you've got my email.
What time are you, what time are you meeting, Ed, out there?
Yeah, 2:15.
Okay.
Out at, out at Timber Sky, out on West 66.
Know exactly where it is.
All right, thank you.
Jess, do we stay on, do we just stay on here to go into the other meeting, or do we?
Yeah, we, we, we stay on. So,
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we, we, often we just turn over cameras and, and take a break till the public hearing starts at 5:30. So with that, so, Chair Burton, certainly I had the pleasure of getting to know Tina in an orientation. So Tina, if you wanted to introduce yourself, I don't know how much you've met the other commissioners who we have here. We only have a total of five of you guys here right now. So we do, we need one more for a, for a quorum. And I do fully anticipate that by 5:30 we'll have a quorum. So anything, any introduction you'd like to give your fellow commissioners here? And staff?
Well, it's a pleasure to help you guys, and I mean that solely because of a lot of experience, but also it's an interesting time, right? So I think all the good heads come together. We work together. David and I just came off the regional. We have one more meeting for that. So I'm really vested in helping the community grow correctly, protecting heritage, protecting everything that we've got. We don't have a lot of land in, in the county, so everything we do, we have to do for, for our citizens.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, then I say we take advantage of the next 25 minutes. I, Jess, I am going to sign off and back in because I'm getting like that little icon error. So it's not giving me the raise hand, one, two, three. So I'm going to pop off and pop back on and hope that that resolves it. So, all right, well, then let's close the study session and we will start promptly the public hearing at 5:30. Thanks.
See you all then.
All right, did we hear from Vice Chair Wilson?
He had confirmed for, as we planned for a forum, he responded that he intended to be there. The only one that I see that, that we did not plan on having for sure was Commissioner Walsh. Sheila Walsh said she wouldn't be, be here. Mary Williams said she was tentative, and we did get a yes from Vice Chair Wilson, but haven't heard from him.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, it's 5:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And yeah, I'm thinking that Commissioner Williams probably isn't going to be joining us this evening, so. And we'll give Vice Chair Wilson a couple more minutes since I got to read the meeting rules and regulations. So, okay, we're calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 26, 2025, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Follow, following the applicant's presentation, I'll make a call to the public. If you wish to address the case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be respectful. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Discussion, decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. We ask that the public, please mute your microphones and turn off your cameras. Additionally, the message function of the platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It is not for case discussion. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McNeely, would you lead us, please?
Will do, Madam Chair. If anyone can join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, second item on the agenda is the approval of the January 29th, 2025 minutes. If there are no comments or corrections, I'm ready to hear motion.
That moved. This is Commissioner Tovey.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
We had a tie there. Let's, we'll take Commissioner Ruggles as the second. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Tovey, second by Commissioner Ruggles. All right, let me go through my list here. It looks like we do not have Vice Chair Wilson, so, okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
This is Chair Burton. I also vote aye, motion passes. I didn't miss anyone, right? Okay. All right, third item on our agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to? Is there anybody in the public who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Brings us to our public hearing portion of the evening. So the first item on the public hearing is for a routine RV as a permanent residence, that's CUP 24028, and is recommended for approval by staff. Are there any commissioners who wish to discuss this case? Seeing none, do either the applicants or the applicant's representative wish to make any additional comments? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case? Seeing nothing, so if we're ready to pass, I'll take a motion in a second for CUP 24028.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve case number CUP 24028.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I will second the motion.
Okay, we'll take Commissioner Ruggles. Okay, so I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Ruggles, motion by Best and second by Ruggles. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the public hearing is CUP-25-001. It's a request for an eight-by-40 metal storage container in the Garland Prairie area. Staff has recommended this for approval. Are there any commissioners to discuss this case? Okay, seeing none, do either the applicant or their representative wish to make any additional comments? Seeing nothing, anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case? Seeing none, I'll take a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve CUP 25-001.
Who wants to give me a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Hayward. All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Best, a second by Commissioner Hayward. All right, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
This is Chair Burton. I also vote aye, motion passes. Last item on the agenda is another call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, it is 5:37, and I am going to call the meeting finished.
All-time record.
It is, by three minutes. All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks all, have a good evening.
Thanks. All right, bye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Have a good night.